We will be conducting tonight's meeting in person as well as in a virtual setting using Zoom to allow staff, consultants, and public to social distance. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting tonight on Wave Channel 18 and online through the city's YouTube channel. If you would like to participate in live public comment via the Zoom platform, please refer to the agenda for instructions. Chair Lyons will begin the meeting momentarily.
Okay, it is now six o'clock. I'll call the April 20, 2022 City of Lincoln Regular Planning Commission meeting to order. Secretary, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Here.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
And Chair Lyons.
And since we have the rare opportunity to see Dia Gix today, because I haven't seen her in a couple of years, I've asked her to lead the Bledge of Allegiance tonight. All right. Item four on the agenda is agenda modifications. Do we have any agenda modifications we'd like to do this evening? Seeing none, we'll go to item five. Citizens may address the Planning Commission on any item on the agenda when that item is considered. Citizens wishing to speak may request to speak by raising your hand when requested to do so. This time is an opportunity to speak on non-agenda items. Secretary, do we have any hands raised? Are anyone in chambers who wishes to speak?
I have not received any speaker cards and I do not see any hands raised.
All right. We will move on to item six, disclosure of ex parte communication. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any communication to disclose? And if you can just raise a hand if you have something you want to say, since we are seeing each other now and we don't have to poll. All right, seeing none, we'll go to item seven, the consent agenda. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request to remove a specific item for separate action is received. Any items removed will be considered after the remainder of the consent agenda. Do any of my colleagues wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Should we ask the public if there is any public that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
That would be consistent with city council's handling.
Okay. Do we have anyone from the public, either online or in the room, who wishes to remove a consent agenda item for a separate discussion?
We do not have any hands raised.
Seeing none, we will, I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Who got it first?
She did.
It doesn't.
All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
And Chair Manning, I'm sorry, Chair Lyons.
Yes.
Did we get everybody?
Not me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Okay. So that takes us through all of item seven to item eight, public hearings. Item eight A is a tentative parcel map for 219 East Eighth Street. And I think we have a staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Lyons, fellow commissioners. In 2014 and again in 2018, the Planning Commission and City Council approved an application for a four-lot tentative subdivision map on the same parcel, but unfortunately, the entitlements expired. Currently this evening, the application is the same as those back in 14 and 18, and the applicant is requesting to divide a .98 acre parcel into four single-family residential parcels. In particular, the applicant is proposing to divide the property into four parcels ranging in size from 6,755 square feet to 10,555 square feet. Property is located at the southeast corner of East Eighth Street and South Herald Avenue. When dividing land, any resulting parcels created must conform to the underlying city standards such as zoning, the general plan, and any specific city requirements. In particular, this is an infill project, and the site is similar to neighboring properties in the general area. The proposed project qualifies for a categorical exemption under Section 15315, Class 15 of minor land divisions, and thereby is exempt from further environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act. Supported by the analysis in the report, staff determined that the project is consistent with the general plan and Lincoln Municipal Code. And those specific conditions of approval, as well as those typical conditions of approval, staff would recommend approval of the project to the commission. The commission will need to conduct a public hearing, and at the close of the public hearing, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that the city council approve the project as presented to you this evening. The applicant is in the room, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey. Any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, secretary, do we have any? Oh, I guess I need to open the public hearing. And the public hearing is now open. Any question or any comments from the public, either in the room or online?
I have no speaker cards and no hands raised.
All right, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to my colleagues. Does anyone have any additional comments? Seeing none, we'll open it up for a motion. Is there anyone who wants to make a motion to find that the proposed project qualifies for categorical exemption under Section 15315, Class 15, minor land division, and is thereby exempt from further environmental review under the Environmental Quality Act and Adopt Resolution 2022-08 recommending that the city council approve the four-lot tentative parcel map?
Second.
And we've been, had a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
And Chair Lyons.
Yes. That brings us to item 8B, Epic Sports Cards. We have a staff report on this.
Thank you. Good evening, Mal Pablo Ines. Item 8B is a request for conditional use permit proposed by Brett Schaefer for the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverage associated with Mr. Schaefer's Epic Sports Card store located at 731 Sterling Parkway. By way of background, the store is located on a property zone, general commercial, and is within the Sterling Point Shopping Center, along with other uses such as restaurants, banks, and offices in the shopping center. Mrs. Schaefer opened his store back in May 2021, about a year ago, and to supplement his business, he filed this conditional use permit to, as a way to basically increase his business as well as revenue for the business. The proposal itself will consist for sale of, consumption of beer or lean. Mr. Schaefer would designate tables and seats for the patrons of the store within the floor area currently as existing. There's also, there'll be one refrigerator as part of the operation to store the beer within the store. Store hours would be, would remain largely the same, but the closing hours would be extended to nine o'clock in the evening. Right now, he operates from Tuesdays to Sunday, I believe. Staff had provided the analysis in the staff report. In particular, had determined that the post CUP is in conformance of the general plan and applicable zoning code. It is also exempt from CEQA under 15301 section. And there are conditions of approval are being recommended to a commission to ensure that orderly operation of proposal occurs, and that's also attached in the staff report. As discussed in the staff report, staff recommends that the planning commission take the following actions. Deem the project exempt from CEQA and adopt resolution approving CUP to allow the sale and onsite on consumption of the alcoholic beverage subject to the condition of approval in attachment one. The applicants are here. Mr. Schaefer is here tonight. We have not received any public comments tonight, and if you have any questions for me or the applicants, let us know. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
In reviewing this particular application, I noticed in one place, there's a description of the floor plan which indicates that 17 by 50 feet, 850 square feet. In the second place in the application, I find it describes the floor plan as 17 by 60 feet, which computes to 1,020 feet. In the third place in the application, I find it states 17 by 60, and it states 1,400 square feet. So my question is, what's right? Because I believe the record should show the actual square footage and the actual dimensions. And right now, the application is in conflict with itself. So if we could get that question answered, if someone knows what's the right answer, and we can amend the record so that it shows that, I think it would serve the applicant well to have the correct information on record.
Thank you for noticing that. I kind of skimmed over that. Apparently others did as well. Do we have an answer?
I'll defer to the applicant. As far as actual square footage, it may have been a typo on my part as far as doing the math and everything. But the applicant is here to confirm the actual square footage.
You have to come to the microphone, please.
Building itself is 1,400 square feet. Designated area for the
Oh, is that not on? Beer and tables is about 800 square feet. So that's where that probably the discrepancy is.
I guess it would be applicable that we recommend approval for a license that specifies the area that it's, that beer is going to be consumed. And therefore, I, you know, I don't know which one is correct, but one of them should be the one in the record so that if someone ever questions it in the future, he can say, well, I have a permit and approval for this area, and that's where I serve beer. And there are people that will, will, if they decide that they don't want their kids in an area where there's alcoholic beverages being served, they might find a place to question our approval. So I'd like to, I'd like the record to be clear on where the beer is going to be served. It's really to protect you. I do that for you because I have my younger son had a sports card business for many years.
Okay. Yeah, no, I appreciate that, yeah. There, even though there will be children there, but I've got it designated for the beer area in the back, so yeah, we can definitely stipulate that within the plan itself, yeah.
So that's something we can handle as part of the motion to recommend it to the city council with an amendment?
Well, Mr. Chair, whatever, any way that the staff wants to handle it, I only want the record to be clear to protect the applicant and protect the city.
Staff would agree to that?
Yes. Typically, it can be handled as part of the conditions of approval. With your motion, you could add something to the extent that says a, an area will be designated for beer or for actual consumption or sale within the floor plan of the store. I don't know the specific size that you want to limit yourself to, but, but it'll be a condition of approval that we can add on to, to the current conditions of approval as recommended. Also, I want to make a note that this wouldn't be heard by the city council. Your, your commission is the final authority on this CUP, so there wouldn't be any recommendation to the city council. So you'll be the last stop as far as ultimate hearing.
And just, just for clarification, the conditional use permit, if you review Exhibit A to the conditional use permit, it is specifically approving alcohol beverages for onsite consumption at 731 Sterling Parkway Suite 300. There is no specification as to square footage.
I'm looking at an exhibit in Attachment 2 that has a floor plan that shows two specified areas. Says dedicated area for alcohol sales and beverage, seven feet by 13 feet in one space with three tables, and a second area, dedicated area for alcohol sales and beverage, seven feet by 19 feet with three tables.
Is that part of the application or is that part of the conditions?
That is part of the application that is attached to the staff report. It is not part of the CUP.
So can we do a motion to incorporate that as one of the conditions that would comply with that application floor plan?
If that's the will of the commission, yes.
Yeah, that's a possibility. Would, would the applicant be happy with that?
So what exactly are you saying? Just designate one area for the alcohol?
Well, the application, you had designated areas, but the actual resolution doesn't, and the conditions of approval don't specify those areas. The question, and we haven't voted on it. I don't know if that's, but I'm kind of just exploring possibilities at the moment. But if we were to incorporate that floor plan into the conditions of approval, would you be okay with that?
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure why the floor plan has to be incorporated. I mean, it's just the square footage that's being used. There, ABC doesn't have a problem with the, with the beer consumption itself. It's, it'll be consumed within the building itself. It will not be allowed outside.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In the, in the application, it identifies the address and the suite number, correct? Okay, so if it's at 123 Fifth Street, Suite C, why do we have to know where inside a street, Suite C, they're going to sit to drink the beer? It could be anywhere in Suite C. There's the address, here's the suite, you can have beer in there. I would be more confused by somebody telling me, okay, you can have beer in Suite C, but you have to either sit over there or over there, but you can't sit over here. That, to me, is a bit ridiculous. I would say as long as we have the address and the suite number, let's deal with it and move on. I don't care where they sit in there. And defining it by saying it has to be in these two areas would seem unenforceable. What if I walk in, somebody's sitting there drinking a beer in the middle? Do I, as a planning commissioner, call the police and have them arrested? It's, it seems to me that we're over-managing a pretty simple situation. 123 Fifth Street, Suite C. You can either drink beer in there or not, but why do we have to define where inside that room they can sit to drink beer? I can sit and drink beer in that seat, but I can't sit and drink beer in this seat? I don't get it.
Well, that's for the other commissioners to voice opinions and, and either vote on. Is there any further comment? Peter, you started the topic. Do you want to make a further comment?
Well, I did bring it up for us to have a lengthy discussion, but having signed on for a consumption of alcoholic beverages licenses many times in my career, I can tell you that ABC looks at it a little different than Commissioner Cross. And they do specify, you can have a place of business, and you can only serve alcohol beverage in a certain part of that business. In a certain part of that business, that's where they would sit minors. They do, some companies, some corporations do this as a way to protect themselves against serving to a minor. So when you come into business, over there, anybody can sit. Over here, they have alcoholic beverages served. They may by law have the right to serve on the other side, but they also have the right to their stockholders to protect their license. And so they do, they do separate it up. So I didn't, I didn't want to cause any problem for the applicant. I did not, I did not want to create a problem for him if someone were to challenge it in the future. He knows where he's going to serve alcoholic beverages. I just think that our approval should support that, whatever it happens to be, assuming that we're going to approve this.
Mr. Chairman, by the same token, there are many restaurants in town where alcohol is served, and children sit at the table with their parents when they're having alcohol. Like, I was at dinner at Bonerati's the other night, and, and right in the table next to us were some children and some parents, and they're, they're consuming alcohol right at the same table.
True. And, and if I can maybe provide a little bit of clarity? I think that the, the rules that you're talking about, Commissioner Gilbert, deal with the sales of hard alcohol and the age restrictions that they put on a bar if you're going to enter into a bar that is strictly a bar. So I think that, because then they very much definitively define the square footage, and if you're going to drink outside, they have to have railings and fencing and all of that kind of thing. So with just strictly the sale of beer, and not even wine, as I understand it, I don't know that those rules would be applicable here.
The only, the only example that I can provide for you is three doors down is Get Ax. They've got a lot more square footage than I do, and they have the exact same license that I'm applying for. And they use the whole area for, for the consumption.
And if I'm, if I can make a note as well, the ultimate license that will be issued for this facility is for, it's license 40, which is limited to beer. And, and as Commissioner pointed out, you know, it's, there are other licenses and restrictions that are, that will be in effect. This would establish the land use, to use the site, but, you know, along with other restrictions by, by ABC, those will have to be adhered to as well. Type 41 license is typically issued for restaurants, so those are more, a broader range of drinks. And they're a bigger facility, the modified facility, because it's a restaurant as opposed to this facility, which is basically not a modified use, but through our use permit process, it requires one to establish the use. But then beyond that, there's other licenses required by ABC, restrictions that will be applicable as well. So I'm sure Mr. Mr. Schaefer would know about, about that in terms of what restrictions there would be, subject to the ABC review.
I was personally attacked and condemned as being wrong. I want to make note that I didn't say anything wrong, and I wasn't wrong. I just offered my opinion. And I, as a member of this committee, I have a right to do that.
I didn't say you were wrong.
You did indeed.
Okay.
I didn't hear that, but thank you. Thank you for clarification. Commissioner Gilbert, do you wish to, to make a motion for amendment of any kind or?
Well, after we have a full discussion, maybe, but I don't know if we've ever heard from the public yet.
It's also a public here.
Yes.
I understand.
This wouldn't be appropriate time to make a motion.
Okay. We'll hear from the rest of the commissioners before we go to a public hearing. Any further comments?
Yeah, I guess for me, forgive my ignorance, I'm not an alcohol drinker, so I'm kind of like, this is foreign territory for me. But just to understand, so the ABC, since it's not hard liquor, there isn't necessarily like a designated, like creating dotted lines within an establishment. You have to consume it here. It's anywhere within this suite, it can be consumed, is that? And then it's up to us if we want to push it through. Is it's, you know, it's liberals, you know, is that of anything in the suite can be consumed? Or we're also able to, I guess, specify, hey, within this area, within this suite, it has to be consumed? I guess I'm trying to determine like what we're actually trying to accomplish.
That is a policy decision for this commission to make. I will tell you that the way the application process works with the ABC is you submit an application, and if a conditional use permit is required, they will not approve the application until they receive the CUP. So the ABC will accept whatever conditional uses this body approves.
Okay. So I guess we can do either, as long as we all approve it. I guess my question to applicant, do you have a preference? You know, if it's, if it's, you can consume it anywhere within your suite, or if you want to really restrict it, like on your exhibit, and I have some dotted lines, like a specific area?
My, my intention is to keep it in the back of the house and not bring it as far forward as the entrance, which I wouldn't want it to be that far. So the fridge, along with seating, is all in the back of the house. So that's where the majority of the consumption will be, will take place. Now, I won't, I won't allow them to leave the premises. Again, ABC, within the difference type of licenses, that's where they allow hard alcohol, beer. But yeah, I won't allow any, anybody to leave the premises with, with alcohol.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess, I guess if you might be able to clarify, so do you have, do you have a preference? Like, do you want us to set a limit? Like, you can only go?
I'd rather not. Again, it, it's my intention not to let, allow anybody through the door with any of the beer.
Yeah, yeah, pass the door. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but it's also, again, my intention to keep it in the back of the house.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as the policy, you're fine with the whole suite?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's all I have.
Right. Commissioner McKinney? Okay. Okay, we're going to open up for public hearing. Is there any comments from the public or online or in the room?
I have no speaker cards and no hands are raised.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to my colleagues. Commissioner McKinney?
Yeah, I, before we take a motion, or I'm inclined not to put any restrictions in terms of seating area. You know, it restricts your ability to use your space, and we don't do that to other businesses, so why would we do that to you?
Yeah, my personal opinion is, once you codify a floor plan, you can't change it. It would be, I'd rather let you rearrange if it's, who knows, it could be a better arrangement that's less exposure to kids by giving you the freedom to do so. So that's my perspective, but.
I would just like to support Ms. Commissioner McKinney's position.
Commissioner Gilbert, did you want to make a motion or do you have further comment at this point?
I have no further comment. I, I support the applicant's requirement. The only thing I wanted to do is see that there would be one. The only thing I wanted to do is see that there would be one specification, if it's the whole place, and we have the right dimensions so that nobody in the future can challenge our decision. That was my only, my only concern. And then, of course, you know, it has to be ABC-approved.
Of course.
And they do, they do a much more thorough investigation than, than we're equipped to do. And we'll issue the license. Once we approve the plan, we have no control anymore about, you know, about the issue of the license. So I feel very comfortable with taking the action tonight.
Mr. Hutchinson, any comment?
Sure. McKinney's position. Yes.
Any further comments on this side?
No, I just in line with, you know, I, I'd rather give him, you know, as much freedom as he can get, you know, up to the boundaries of the door, you know, to do as they see fit as a business. I just want to appreciate Commissioner Gilbert for, you know, just highlighting that, just to make sure we get it right.
Yeah, I have no problem with having the conversation, so. Thank you. All right, so this would be resolution 2022-8. To find that
Dash nine.
Oh, I'm looking up the wrong spot. Sorry, I would have been reading the wrong motion. 2022-09. This would be a motion to find that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under section 15301, class 1, existing facilities, and approving a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages, subject to the attached conditions of approval. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
I think Commissioner Johnson won that one. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
And Chair Lyons?
Yes. Congratulations. All right, item nine, general business. I am told we have no general business tonight. Item 10, Commissioner comments. Do any of my colleagues have any comments? Woody's jumping. All right. Informational items from staff. Does staff have anything for us?
I do have one thing. Just want to introduce our new staff, Effren Sanchez. You met, you met him a few minutes ago before the meeting started, but I want to formally introduce our additional staff to our current planning team, so.
Not only him, but, but Genie.
Oh, Genie as well. So I could let him speak for a few minutes, but I used to work with Effren from the county of Laredo. Actually hired him back in 2017, so he happens to live in town, so, and he's, he's basically broadened his expertise in planning, and so he's here now as a senior planner.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mel. Yes, I do.
Yeah, very good. Welcome to the team.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
Same to Eugenia. Eugenia, you can go by Genie.
She does. So Genie Guadron is our interim senior administrative analyst. So she's trying the position on, and we're very hopeful that she's going to be very successful.
Excellent.
She does. And also, as an informational item, the recruitment for our community development director is open. It's been open for a little over a week now. It is through Mosaic Partners, so you can see that on their website. If you know of anybody in your planning commissioner world that might be a good fit for Lincoln with an exciting opportunity to really form some amazing projects in the city of Lincoln over the next several years, this is a great opportunity, so. Oh, and I guess while we're on the record, I'll introduce Sean again. Sean Scully, our new city manager. This is his first planning commission meeting, and so we're all very excited to have Sean on board. He's making some great strides and healthy changes for the city of Lincoln and its culture, and I think we're expecting great things and already seeing great things.
I would agree. I don't think I've ever seen a city manager come to the planning commission, so. And I've been on this, what, 12 years? So I, you're already starting out well with us, I think. You don't have to come to all of them, but it is nice to actually have you visit, so that's great. Thank you. Was that it for the city staff? All right, that brings us to item 12, and we are now adjourned. It's not as loud as it was. We've got phones on the line.